Mr. Chief.
It's six o'clock. The Father ordered the regular scheduled city council meeting, City of Kennedy, February 11th, 2020. The forum is present. Deborah, please call it over.
Brandon Brios. Not here. Leslie then?
Here.
Cindy Sines?
Here.
Danny Sutton?
Here.
Brenda Kamla?
Here.
And Justin Martin?
Here.
Thank you. Leslie, would you sit up there, please?
Oh, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we ask that you would be with us and help us to move in a direction that is beneficial to this community and this city. We ask that you would give us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding, and kindness to listen to each other and be mindful of our words and our deeds. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Deborah, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comment?
Um, I did not have anybody sign up.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on their citizen comments that has not had the opportunity to sign up to speak on their citizen comments? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. Anything you guys want to pull and visit on? Item number six.
I would like to pull, um, fire department.
Fire department?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
Fire department and, um, water and wastewater.
Water and wastewater. Okay. Anything else? Justin?
That's it.
Rindell?
Okay.
Leslie?
Complete.
Send me anything else?
No.
Okay, you can open with fire department.
Okay. Uh, is there anybody here from the department? Um, I was on social media, was watching the, uh, a different fire department doing training at the training center, and I'm wondering where we are with the fire department agreement. Do you know anything about the agreement?
The agreement, uh, a little bit. I believe the attorney is working on that agreement.
Okay.
My understanding, ma'am. And it's the, um, it's interlocally has a lot of cities in, at the same agreement. And I believe I talked to the, the county attorney on, uh, see what she had in mind, separate agreement for the city or just one big one. So I think she has one big one in mind. I don't know if they sent us full review already, but I think that's it.
Okay, so nobody has one yet?
I, I do not believe. And there's the, the amount of, uh, that the city contributes to the, uh, the training station. And I had questions regarding, uh, little morphs because we're paying a certain amount. What benefits of the city is going to receive with that? I think that's where we were.
Is it still the same amount, I believe?
I think it's the same amount. I just need to clarify, you know, what that gets us.
That's all.
Adolfo asked the city manager to call a special meeting for the evening of February so we can all find out where we're at on that. Charlie Monahan contacted me, instead of the Kennedy Fire Department. It's been several months. Do you think that's something we'll be able to take care of on the evening?
Oh, I'll try your information. So it counts every time.
Sure. I will not be here on the evening. Item number N?
Oh, okay. Uh, I've asked several times on the update for the May, uh, Maytag area, and I believe it was the January 14th meeting where I asked again, and I was told that we're waiting on bids. Are we still waiting on bids for the Maytag area? Do you know anything about that project?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, and yes, we are, uh, we're going out for bids, for seal bids. And, um, if we're able to get that done this week, we can advertise.
This week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Advertise this week?
Yes.
Advertise this week.
And how long does that take?
Two weeks. Two weeks. Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
Um, one more question. There's a report here, but I'm not sure who it belongs to. Is it your report, the city manager's report? Like a summary of activities for January 2020? I don't know whose report that is.
I'm not sure, ma'am, but that might be the public works director's report.
Okay, 'cause I, I don't see a, there's no title on it, but I, I figured it might be his. Don't see him.
Yes, ma'am, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Anything else? You guys want to consider or act on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with, uh, or we can make them change it. So, uh, make a motion and approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second that.
There's no other discussion, call it over.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number seven, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution 20 dash 03, a resolution confirming support to be, support to the proposed Town Oak Apartments located at 120 Water Street for construction of affordable rental housing in the City of Kennedy. Any motion on that?
Make a motion. We consider it an item number seven.
Second?
I'll second.
Another presentation on that?
Yeah. Yeah, ma'am. County Council, my name is Justin Meyer. I'm here to, uh, to talk about the Town Oaks Apartments. They are currently located at 120 Water Street. Uh, they, we are representing their application to the State Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. My associate back here, Mark, is also here, happy to answer any questions that you might have. A quick overview, we are applying to the State Texas for housing tax credits. This is a program that is highly competitive and is much like CUBG block grants, which I'm sure you're familiar with. Once the money runs out, you're done. So everything is based on a point scale. So our applications can be anywhere between 400 and 700 pages to the state, and they are due by 5:00 PM on February 28th, whether we are ready or not. So we're representing the Hamilton Valley Management Company. They are, they are the individuals that actually constructed and have always maintained and owned the Town Oaks Apartments. Uh, it is, we're participating in a program called Acquisition Rehabilitation. That means that there is one entity selling these apartments and a new entity purchasing these apartments. However, the new purchasing ownership is also Hamilton Valley through a subsidiary company. So they are forming a partnership with a new investor entity who will reap the benefits of the tax credits, which is what makes this program feasible. They have been, they, they currently manage 90 properties throughout the state of Texas, and they have been in business since 1969. We are arts advantage. We are the folks that help them navigate the treacherous waters and state paperwork. And our, our principal, Robbie Meyer, is the former director of the multifamily program at the State Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. So to say we understand the program, it's, it may be a bit of an understatement. She helped write the meetings and she knows why the periods are where they are and why they dotted the i's and crossed the t's. We are applying for the benefit of the current residents of the apartments. We're not going to be removing any current tenants. It's all a matter of upgrading it for the current residents and any future residents that happen to come in. It consists of 48 units. There are 16 single bed units, 24, two bedroom units, and eight, uh, three bedroom units. And currently, there is only a single vacancy, which as I understand, there is a waiting list to fill. So, uh, to say it has good occupancy is maybe a touch of an understatement. It is performing very well. We had a meeting with the manager earlier today. We are proposing to retrofit parking areas for accessibility, bring it up to accessibility codes. We'd replace kitchen countertops, vanities, um, cabinetry. We replace kitchen sinks, uh, new mailbox pads. If you happen to have this in your, your presentation, which I can all believe you do, that's a pretty good approximation of what we're proposing to, to do as far as this renovation goes. As I said, uh, we are, we are participating to the state's timeline here. Back on January the 8th, we submitted a pre-application to the state, and it was kind of a earmark saying, uh, when they produced a log that next week, it kind of gave us an idea of how competitive we are. We believe that we are very competitive, uh, to receive an award for this. So on February 28th, our plan is to submit a full application to the state, uh, in which we hope to include a resolution of support from the city. In July, we'll find out whether or not we actually get our award, and we would close on the development April 21 and begin construction in June. There's, the, the reason that we're here tonight is because, like I said, everything is graded on a, a point scale. And a resolution from the local municipality is the second highest scoring item on the entire application. When, when the game is at one or lost by five points, not two, not one, it usually goes down to tiebreakers to say that, uh, this is an absolutely critical item. It's a bit of an understatement. Uh, if, if we don't have a resolution of support from the city, we will unfortunately not be able to move forward with our application to the state. The second piece from the city that we need is a waiver and reduction of fees in the amount of $250. That could be anything from a reduction in, uh, haul off for construction waste, or committing fees, or anything of that nature. It's not something that we necessarily even want to ask for, it's just a point on our application to the state. It shows that the city has some skin in the game as far as it is. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and, uh, thank you for your opportunity.
My, my question, my first, my question is, is the tenants that are there, all of them already qualified for this program?
That's correct. They, they're actually, this is a tax credit housing development. All of them are rating 60% or below the area median income, and they had to go through a, a qualification in order to get into these apartments. So nothing changes as far as the tenant requirements.
So nobody would be displaced?
Correct. And, and to go further than that, uh, when you talk about this place, we, we don't even displace people during our renovation process. We do something called renovating in place. We move them out for the day, we do as much work as we possibly can, we move them in. And that's, and move them back in. That's in the event that we don't have a vacant unit, which is highly likely in this particular case.
So Adolfo, you wrote the resolution on that?
It was, no, it was already prepared.
We, we sent this resolution worded in this meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, uh, it's a standard type of resolution so they could receive the prep. I think the, uh, issue that, uh, that, uh, I moved was the, the $250 because I needed statute for the, uh, it's not sure if I should connect the, the authority of the city to do that. I know, uh, they're asking for not necessarily payment, but waiver of fees, which the city can do. I just, uh, I took that part in there because I didn't want to make it a specific obligation, but certainly one the city can do, once I could determine the, the authority decide to, so we don't have any complaints.
Okay. Do you have any input?
Uh, no, sir, just what the attorney's already mentioned.
Any, any problems, either of you guys?
It's just whether requirements and they require cities in a sense blessing to buy it. They, they, you know, we're blessing, uh, just a wave, uh, which is a campaign, like I said, the things that have to happen.
You guys have anything on that? Questions, comments, concerns?
That was my only question. I just want to make sure that we, that everybody that was already living there would still be able to be living there, and that nobody would be displaced from it. It's a, seems to be a, something that would benefit. It would make the living areas nicer and make them more ADA approved.
Yes, sir.
And it wouldn't cost the city nothing.
Except the waiver.
Except the $250. And, you know, that could be, that could be waived in a, in a, in just a permit, in a permit fee.
Right, honestly, just charge us an extra $250 on something. It's just a point of that.
Jason, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, for resolution 20 dash 03, confirming support to the proposed Town Oaks, uh, location at 120 Water Street for construction of affordable rental housing in the City of Kennedy.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call it over.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Um, Brandon?
Yes.
And Justin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution 20 dash 04, authorizing a professional service agreement with Wet, with Wet Rock Groundwater Services LLC to complete plans and specifications for two new water wells, Corizo number, well number one and number two, for the Corizo Well Project for an amount, not two, $170,000. Presentation?
Yes, um, I, uh, you should have in your packet, uh, proposal that we put together. It includes the design, bidding, construction oversight, TCQ approvals, the Evergreen on the groundwater district approvals, um, and, uh, final submittals to the TCQ for the wells, the two crucial wells. A few months ago, I think, we were talking about the well project, and I mentioned that this process from start to finish is going to be well over a year to take when you start design through construction. And, uh, depending on when the city would like those wells done, I know we had with the landowner, the lease, we had up to three years, which we were already a year in, to, to start producing water before payment came to end. So that, that's what precipitated the proposal that was brought to you today.
Has anybody reviewed that, that proposal?
And so in the, the resolution, it says the city is not required to bid out these, what, the two well projects?
Because it's professional services. Hydro, uh, hydro, uh, it's, it's-
Hydro geological?
Hydro geological, hydro scientific, whatever. Those are professionals, those are professions, uh, that are considered professional, so they don't have to do those.
We do need, we do need a motion before we can start discussion. We got a presentation, we need a motion.
Good idea. Motion.
I'll make a motion to consider item eight on the agenda.
I'll second that.
How about our, our engineers, have they looked at any of this? I just want to make sure that we stay with them all the time and all of this.
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Underbrink is here, if he wants to address it, with your permission, but, uh, yes, sir. He's been involved in these projects, and the engineer has record on the project, and I believe they are in favor of countering wetting rock on this part of the project. Yeah, we're together as collaboration as a team. No big deal.
Correct.
Any other discussion, guys? And you're good with the contractor?
Yes, our regular-
Services, services contract.
Yeah, yeah.
Once we approve this, how soon will you start?
We can start right away.
Right away?
Yep, absolutely. Anybody want to make a motion for anything?
I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number eight, passing it.
Second?
I'll second.
Justin, Brandon. If there's no, uh, any other discussion? Nope? Call it over.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you. Item number nine, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution 20 dash 05, meaning the City of Kennedy's 2017 professional service agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated in connection with consulting engineering and engineering design services for the City of Kennedy in order to provide for an increase in the hourly rate it charges the city. Any movement?
Make a motion to discuss item number nine.
Second?
I'll second.
Is there a presentation? You already know what I'm asking for.
You may have in your packet a-
One second.
-security table?
Excuse me. Mayor, with your permission and conjunction with Mr. Underbrink's, uh, presentation, uh, we have some handouts we need to use out.
Oh, yes, please.
Always.
Okay, so I'm going to take you back to January of 2017, which is when you hired us originally. We gave you a contract and rate schedule, which you approved at that one time. We had one amendment to the contract that expanded our scope of services to include some other things that you guys have asked us to do, and we're very grateful. So this now is three years hence, and we're asking for an adjustment to our rates, mainly because of inflation, but also because, uh, the number of people that we have working and the pay rates that we use for categories have changed. We are still, as before, offering you a discount off of our standard rate schedule because we usually do that for municipalities. Okay, so you're, you're getting a discounted rate, and the table that was just passed out to you is the old rate compared to the new rate. Couple of them went down, but most of them increased some. And so with three years' work of inflation, we'd like to have the costs adjusted so that it more closely resembles our cost of doing business. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but that's in a nutshell what we're asking for. Nothing else in the contract will change.
Yeah, I'm really only here on-
Simply the rates.
Got a question. 2020 Consulting Services over here at the bottom, number 10, says rates are subject to change and may be superseded by a new schedule on or about January 1st, 2021. Can you give us more information on what that's about? We'd have to be private counsel for us to reprove this. Okay. It just won't change.
So if we change our rates, you don't care. But if I bring it to you and ask you to change our contract, then we'll discuss it just like we're doing right now.
So you can change the rates without our approval?
Our company can change the rates, we just can't change what we've built to you without your approval. So that means every other client- Pays more. Pays more. We still pay. And you're still paying this, that's right.
Okay.
So you, you get a little bit more of a discount when you do that. We're happy with that.
I want a bottom discount, David. Sure, you do a lot of money with your guys, because, you know, and I know you all provide a good service and lots of it. And I know you don't charge us for the phone calls, but I mean, it'd be silly not to ask.
Well, I mean, I had to get special permission to do this. This was something that came over from, from Nice Smith, and, uh, is not something that Hanson does on a regular basis. So the fact that we're giving a little bit of a discount off of our standard charge raises, that's, that's a plus.
Do you even have an idea on how much might we pay you since January of 2017?
I could, I could guess, um, you guys put about a million dollars a year in your budget for us, uh, and then the sports complex and, and other projects like that tack on, on top of that. 2017 was, was not that sort of amount, but I would guess, with everything that we've done, it's between two million and three million, I guess, over three years. And then with the water project coming up, you know, that's going to, that's going to be probably another five million dollars worth of work over three years' time.
Part of your work, David?
Just for, just for that project alone.
Part of your work or the work that you guys do, it's, uh, is it cleaning up some of the problems that we've had in the past?
Yeah, um, we've, of course, we were hired originally to help with the TCQ issues facing the city. And, um, that was both water and wastewater. We were under enforcement for wastewater. And of course, when Rindell Webb and I walked out onto the water, the wastewater treatment plant, we saw that clarifier number three was not in service, there was no drive mechanism in place to turn the rotors to scrape the solids, there was no water in, in the container. It was empty, and the plant's not supposed to operate like that. But the TCQ was fining you guys because we're in compliance. And so we, we went to Austin and met with them and got the fines traded for in-kind work at the plant. We did the first phase of the wastewater treatment plant, uh, which was removing the grit, adding blowers and mixers to the oxidation ditch. And that first project, we're spending more than the amount of the fines to complete that project, but they agreed to alleviate the fines if we would spend that money. We have another item on the agenda tonight to go to Phase Two, which is part of that original enforcement program as well. So we're, we're continuing to do wastewater work to get us in compliance. And then on the water treatment side, we have been arguing with them about the number of connections in the city, because that affects the capacity of our pumps, our storage, and everything else that goes into the water system. So we've been working with TCQ, trying to make sure that everybody's in agreement on what needs to be done for the water system. And you have other things, too, that aren't under enforcement that need to be done. You need to be replacing water lines and sewer lines that are old, and, you know, a lot of breaks, a lot of cave-ins, things like that, that we need to start budgeting for, and do a little bit every year, you know, try and bite off all the ones. So there's a lot of things with the water and wastewater stuff that originated with the enforcement actions from TCQ. So as long as we are, um, making strides towards fixing that sort of thing, uh, we've got them off our back. But that's how we started out with the city, was to address that.
Any more questions?
And with all the work that you have going on right now, that we're still able to get, to meet all the deadlines that are out there?
Yeah, TCQ is probably the, the biggest deal with deadlines. We have to go through and design things, get it approved, and let them look at it, and then authorize bids and go to construction. But those, those processes are not set in stone, so we sometimes have to negotiate extensions to the deadlines. Yes, that's-
Since y'all got here in 2017, how much, how the fines come down since y'all got here?
Well, the fines that were in place with the wastewater side were like $60,000 to $5,000. And, and what we said was, look, it doesn't do any good for the city to pay that kind of money for nothing. So can we, can we put that money towards a construction project? Well, a construction project for Phase One of the wastewater treatment plant is almost $2 million. So we're spending, you know, $2 million for real improvements in, in fixing-
Instead of giving away money.
Wrong, instead of giving away money. So, yes, we were able to get it reduced from $65,000 to $0. But the, the coin is that it's been $2 million in place, and then we have this other item on the agenda tonight, we need to spend that money, too. But that's because we hadn't done any work here on the treatment plant in years, so we let it pile up.
How many years?
I, I would guess 12, at least 15. And there's other things we're doing, too. Some, some of the things are, besides the blowers and the mixers and the grip removal, we have to put a covering of chlorine storage, we have to get the clarifier back, and the live from clarifier has to be put in. The paddles are falling off the, the oxidation ditch rotors. That's to splash the water and get oxygen into it. We need to replace the paddles on the rotors. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of little things that are maintenance items. It's not really improvements to make- It's not really improvements to make it better, just to catch it back up. But it's all needs to be done. We're coming along. And the whole time that we're working on this, the plant's the water quality is coming out of the plant still good. So things are going well.
And what's the max capacity for that net versus where it's at right now?
It's down a little bit because the prison is not using as much water and they're not flushing as much water through the system. That plant will run easily a million and a half gallons a day. It's rated at a million and a half. We're doing a rerate study to hopefully get it increased to two million and to look at what little things we might do to make that happen, if any. But easily a million and a half. And you're running about one point one million, I think, right now. So we're about seventy percent of the capacity. Which is good because when you get to seventy-five percent, I'm gonna start doing things for additional capacity. So that's why we're looking at the rerate.
Anything else? Any movement?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolutions, twenty dash five, amending the City of Kennedy's two thousand seventeen professional service agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated to connecting consulting, engineering, and engineering design services for the City of Kennedy in order to provide an increase in the hourly rate that they charge to the City of Kennedy.
Second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion?
And with this, would these rates go into effect? They'll be set for at least another year or two, whenever I want to take spring out and come back?
Two, three years.
Two, three years. And we'll be able to budget that in the budget coming this fiscal year?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call roll.
Brandon?
Nay.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
No.
Brandon?
Yes.
Ken?
Justin?
Yes.
I'm Justin, sorry.
That's okay.
What did you say?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number ten, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution twenty dash zero six, authorizing a construction contract with playground park structures of southern Texas for bleachers and shade structures at the Larry Keesling Youth Sports Complex in the amount of two hundred nine thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars even, and to authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Before we, I guess I'm gonna ask, why do we want the mayor to authorize to execute the contract?
I put the mayor because you have the interim, the mayor or his or her deputy. Just because we have an interim city manager, it could be either way. I put the mayor because we have a permanent city manager, but it's, you could direct the city manager, so.
Okay, that'd be a good idea. I mean, just
Yeah.
that would be a little better.
Sure.
Okay, do we wanna talk about it?
Do we have somebody, somebody here to do a presentation on?
Can you do that presentation?
Yeah, you wanna do the motion to discuss.
Yes.
Make a motion to discuss item number ten.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Okay. This is one part of the sports complex project that we took prices from some of the early bidders and didn't like the prices that we got. So we went direct to the supplier for this, and so that's why it's lagging behind a little bit. The contract which we approved tonight was through the usual procurement system we've been using to prevent having to authorize advertising for bids and all that. So the amount of the contract is two thousand nine dollars, two hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And would include all of the bleachers and the shade structures that were part of the presentation I did back in in March a year ago. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Bleachers for all the fields, right?
All four. Yes.
Did you have something to add?
Uh, no, sir, Mayor.
Okay. You guys have any questions for David?
What's the warranty on this?
It's a standard twelve-month warranty for moving materials.
And is this
Nothing special.
Is the shade like a mesh or like a netting?
Yes.
Who else in the area has one like this? Have you been compared to? What you can think of?
I'm not sure I know the answer to that. I don't know that anybody has one quite like this.
Victoria has something similar on the shade part of it.
Yeah, but it's not exact.
Yeah, no, it's not exact, that's for sure.
So is there a reason why you decided to go with the mesh or the design was some type of mesh material instead of a hard product?
Because it's a little less expensive, so it's more economical to do it that way. Of course, the downside is the durability won't be as long as something that's metal. But it was our feeling that we could get that in and then address it later overall for less money. And get double the price of it to go with it. It takes a lot more structure to hold it.
Right.
And it's not many sports. It's gonna be played in the rain, so or hail or any of those. It's just to keep the sun off you so you can be comfortable. That's correct. And that mesh is very functional for that.
Versus the elements of the weather, how it's hold up? You know, hard storm?
It is UV protected and it's rated to withstand any hot winds.
It's the same kind of mesh you see at the different car lots now, right?
Sure.
And, you know, that stuff, that go through hailstorms and keep their cars from being damaged, and it's pretty durable.
I mean, considering how much more you'd have to pay to get something a lot better recently, so that's why we're suggesting this.
What did we have out at the ballpark before?
Pretty much nothing.
Okay.
There were some covers over the bleachers behind home plate.
So these are for the basketball?
This is, no, this is for the
Where you sit.
This is for the right field, left field spectators.
Just throughout the bar, throughout the
Yeah, so there'll be shade structures, too, for field throughout. So, I mean, it's nice. But we wanted a lot of shade, so we decided to go to the more economical system. More shade for the best.
Thousand seat, right?
You know, I don't know. I bet you probably can, yeah. Plus, the shade, you can bring your lawn chairs out. Try to stay out in the sun that way. Move them around a bit as the sun moves.
Any movement?
One last question before we make movement, because I know everybody, this is part of the original seven point five million dollar
Yes, sir. That's right.
In that case, I'm gonna make a motion that we take action in regards to resolution twenty dash six, authorizing a construction content with, contract with play and park structures of southern Texas for the bleachers and shade structure for the Larry Keesley Youth Park. Sports complex in the amount of two hundred nine thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and authorize the mayor or the interim city manager to execute that contract.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? Is it, so it's the mayor or the city manager?
The mayor or his, does he? The mayor always has an option to
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call roll.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, David.
We'll get that ordered. Are you ready to go?
Okay. We appreciate it. Consideration of possible action in regard to approving change order number two to the civil site work contract for RL Roadie General Contracting Incorporated for the Larry Keesley Youth Sports Complex in the amount of ten thousand, two dollars and twenty-one cents. Movement?
Make a motion to consider item number eleven.
I'll second that.
Presentation.
Without throwing AEP under the bus too hard, I would tell you that they gave us some specifications for the foundation for the sports complex that caused the contractor to need to spend some of that. So that's what we're up against right here. It's not really a veteran issue. It's more like correcting a deficiency because we didn't have their specifications until late in the game. So this corrects the amount of money that needs to be spent on electricity into the park. That's what this is. I'm sorry.
The concrete structure that the generator sets on?
Yeah, the foundation.
Okay.
They've got a pretty stout foundation that they want there, and it's quite a bit more than what we expected.
About four foot deep in concrete?
It's, yeah. They are pretty pretty overkill, but I think it'll stay there. Yeah.
That's fair.
It'll be there when the parts blow away and it's damp. It'll still be there, so. If you're out there in a windstorm, get behind it.
It's quite true. Okay, so if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for David? Any movement?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the change order two for the civil site work contract with RL Roadie General Contracting for the Larry Keesley Youth Sports Complex in the amount of two thousand, two dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call roll.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, David. Item number twelve, consideration of possible action in regard to the authorization to advertise for bids for the second phase of the City of Kennedy's Wastewater Treatment Plant agreements. Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase Two. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item twelve on the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Presentation.
Okay, so this is the project I mentioned earlier. This is phase two of the continuation of the work at the wastewater treatment plant. This is a lighter duty type project. The first project was a real heavy duty type project where they need cranes and things like that to set equipment. So we'll get a little bit lighter duty work. We wanted to split it because we felt like we could be advantageous on cost by picking a contractor that specializes this way. So that's why we're doing two projects, and we won't be able to let them start immediately, but we're behind the eight ball with the TCEQ, and we need to show them that we're at least trying. So we wanna get this advertised, and we make the prices together, and we wanna run through all the lead times and get things ordered. And hopefully this matches up with the completion of phase one so that we're ready to go with phase two as that contractor's getting out of the way. So that's the hope in the schedule here. And we need your authorization to go to bids.
Hey, where's one at? Where's phase one at?
They are removing grit. We estimated how much time it would take to remove grit. We think that we would like to ask for some more money to remove additional grit. As you know, the reason that we're having to deal with the grit removal is because the headworks at the plant essentially failed and allowed the grit to get past that point. It's a screening mechanism that no longer works. So we're replacing the screen with a new screen that does work and then pulling out the grit that got past the old screen. So there's no way to know what volume is in there. We estimated the number of hours that it would take to do the work. They've done that number of hours, and it looks like we need to spend a little bit more time on it. So that's what we're trying to accomplish in phase one.
And in the future, better maintenance, is that gonna help us?
Yes, I mean, actually paying attention to whether these pieces of equipment work or not is important. And I think you can save yourself the cost of doing things like that. Keep the equipment going and replace it when it needs to be replaced.
And my, one of the new public works directors, he's a person that will be responsible for making sure that that supervisor is on tap for making sure this don't happen again?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I'm part of the director duties.
I was skeptical, Dave. I know you recall the meeting. We had the meeting here. And I was reluctant because the project was so large and it was gonna go for so long. And I have to admit, you guys did sit on top of any contractor who broke this. Because we've actually gotten somewhere. So you were right, Mel.
Well, I don't know if there's a right or wrong, but that's a good project and is needed back. And this one is too. And it's all part of that enforcement action. We put in the fines if we do the work. So we need to vote for this.
Either that or we just write fifty-eight thousand dollar fine check there.
Well, I mean, it may not be that number the next time around.
Right.
Yeah, they, the way fines work is the first time they slap you on the hand, the next time they break your neck. So it may be a whole lot more than that.
Hello, come on in. There's plenty of seats over in the back if you'd like.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Don't interrupt.
No problem.
Any movement, guys?
I'll make a motion that we go out for advertising for phase two at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second?
Is there any other discussion on this item? If there's no other discussion, please call roll.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy? Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, consideration of possible action in regard to a special event license application from the Kennedy Chamber of Commerce for the two thousand twenty Blue Bonnet Days Parade on March eighth, two thousand twenty, from eight AM to twelve PM. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item thirteen on the agenda.
Second? Presentation.
Any more folks? I believe you should all have in your packets our application, including the map of kind of our layout. So because you had requested for us to put the stage on between Second and Third Street to allow for more space for the concert, we are requesting to go down Second Street, take a left on Tilburg, a right on Third, meaning guessing we'll go in front of the police department and the third apartment. But she's asked, she's already agreed to pull out two officers to our movie that night so they can get out. And we won't have to deal with them. And the third apartment, I'm sure, will be the same. Come back down into Main Street and follow Main Street all the way up to School Street, and then come either the park on our own from there or the two and a half rounds to School Street and go back up to, it's gonna be a so anyone have any questions?
You guys reviewed all that, right? Do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the special event license application for the Kennedy Chamber of Commerce, two thousand twenty Blue Bonnet Days Parade on March the eighth, two thousand twenty, from eight AM to twelve PM.
Second?
Should be March the seventh.
So it should be March the seventh?
March the seventh?
Yes.
It's the Saturday.
Okay.
Which special application?
Seven? Do you wanna capture that in your motion, Leslie?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the special event license application for the Chamber of Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the special event license application for the Chamber of, Kennedy Chamber of Commerce for 2020 Blue Bunnet Days Parade on March the seventh, 2020, from eight AM to 12 PM.
Second?
I'll second that.
All right, toss a coin, ladies. Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number fourteen, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution twenty dash seven authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Texas Department of Public Safety for participation in the failure to appear program. Any movement?
I'll make a motion and we consider it to be item number fourteen.
Second? Presentation.
Mary, did you see here? This is a basically a pro forma agreement between the city court and the DPS to participate in the...
Tell me your opinion.
Connection program with them.
Okay.
Best mileage is a pro forma agreement and one that is worth considering.
Dolph, what's your opinion?
It's the standard agreement to handle cities.
Do we have your blessing?
Yes.
Can I ask the chief to tell me what that phase of peer program is?
So when you fail to pay for a ticket?
Uh-huh.
The city court will send a notice to DPS that you owe a ticket. You go to renew your license. They will deny your renewal until that ticket is paid.
Okay, thank you.
And then your license then becomes denied once it expires.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion?
I'll make a motion and we approve the interlocal cooperation contract with the failure to appear program with DPS.
And I'll second it.
Discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number fifteen, consideration, consider and take appropriate action in regard to resolution twenty dash eight for the adoption of the Corns-Wilson County's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation action plan in its entirety. Motion?
I'll make a motion and we consider it to be item fifteen.
Second?
I'll second.
Do we have anyone here? Presentation?
I don't believe so, Kevin.
Shelby, actually Shelby's at a conference who basically put this whole thing together. This is just a formality. We have to have the hazard mitigation here if anybody wants to review it. But it's past everything and this is the last resolution to put it in place. And what this does for the city and county, or counties in this case, is if there's a FEMA disaster and there's FEMA funding or help needed by the city or county, you don't have this hazard mitigation in place, then you can't receive those FEMA dollars.
Dolph?
That's correct.
Do we have your blessing?
That's, I don't think you need it. It's a, it's a program thing.
Okay. Anybody have any movement on that?
I'll make a motion. Okay. I'll make a motion that we take action and approve the resolution twenty dash eight for adopting the Corns-Wilson County's multiple jurisdiction hazard mitigation action plan in its entirety.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number sixteen, consideration of possible action to reappoint Susan Antinias and appoint Alicia Sandoval and Gerardo Salas to the City of Kennedy Parks and Recreations Board for a two-year term beginning March first, 2020, to March first, 2022. Any movement?
I'll make a motion and we consider it to be item sixteen.
Second?
I'll second.
Is there anybody here from the parks to do a presentation on that?
From the Park Sport.
Okay, have that over.
We received the letters from the City of Kennedy for people that were interested to be on the Park Sport.
Great.
And we did receive four letters and we had a meeting. We actually have Alicia that's here tonight. She was there at that meeting that we had last month. Gerardo was there as well and we, the board, we discussed it and we gave out those two recommendations. They were involved in the community, you know, not within the county, so I recommend both of them and...
Okay, I just want to clarify for the public and for the city council so they understand what went on. Generally, the city has rules set up where different people or different groups appoint people to these different committees and boards. The way we did it this year was we sent a letter out. When there was an opening, we sent a letter out to the public or put an ad in the newspaper to the public. Whoever submitted a letter of interest to the City of Kennedy, we submitted those to the Park Sport. The Park Sport then met with those people and they decided amongst themselves who they wanted to work with. Now they're bringing it to us and we're either going to say yes or no. I couldn't think of a more fair way to do it. It doesn't make sense for me to just keep putting people on there. So that's why it's the way it is. Is that how you guys did it?
Correct.
Okay. And there was four that actually showed interest?
Yes.
Okay.
And so the Park Sport decides pretty much who goes and all of those goes?
We make recommendations.
We make recommendations and then the city council approves the appointments.
This is the way it's set up and written, if I'm not mistaken. I looked for this stuff today. We couldn't locate it. The mayor usually appoints who he wants on there. I don't think that's right. So I gave them the option to put who they want. He's bringing it to us. You guys approve it. There it is. I'm okay appointing the people that they've selected, but it has to have your blessing.
Then I'll make a motion that we approve the Park Sport recommendations, starting March first, 2020, through March first, 2022.
I'll second that.
Discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number seventeen, consideration of possible action to reappoint Minnie Robinson, Brenda Duflova, Norma Atkinson, and to appoint Roger Schultz to the City of Kennedy Board of Adjustments for a two-year term beginning March first, 2020, to March first, 2022. Any movement?
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
We discuss item seventeen.
And I'll second that.
Discussion? Again, the rules are there somewhere. We didn't, I couldn't find them today. I try to put people on there from different districts. I believe it or not, the few meetings that these guys have had, I have watched them. Not every one of them. Brenda runs the show over there, bottom line. She does very, very well.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, great.
Just by accident. I didn't come specifically for this, but yeah, that explains why I was, when I talked to Joel, I was like, well, we've never had to have a meeting before, but thank you for thinking of that and not just appointing people.
Right.
But unless you have some questions for me, I really don't have.
No, I don't. I just, I'm unclear. Is Norma staying or not staying? Because when we sent out the notices, my understanding was Norma was not staying, but I see her name on here.
I have no idea. We have not had a meeting. We were to have a meeting. Joel had called me earlier and we were to have a meeting at five o'clock today, but then it got canceled earlier this week. And when I called him back on Monday, he said, well, he couldn't get all the people here. So I don't know. I haven't been in contact with them. Normally, we don't meet unless somebody requests a variance.
Okay.
And so we hadn't had a scheduled meeting, so this was a last minute thing. So, you know, I myself have no problem with, you know, the people that are on the board. I knew that we did have one board member that passed away and so we had an opening. And I'm assuming that's the position that Roger Schultz is, they're fulfilled, being asked.
I believe so.
Fulfill.
I believe so.
Get that out there.
Okay. Thank you. What did you say? Yes, sir.
No, sir, this is what y'all have already stated. It's the appointment to the board. It'd be up to five members and I think we have four listed here.
Were there any other applicants for that board? Were there any applicants?
I can't answer a question. I honestly don't know.
I only have two people that were interested. And it was Roger and another person and I think, I think, not a cook, but I don't believe she was interested at the end of the show. That's why her name isn't on here.
But they haven't met either, so should we let them meet to look at any other people who may have?
Did anybody else?
What was it?
Was it advertised like those first ones?
I don't know, but I'm going to, I'm really not sure, but I'm going to tell you the situation it was run into. There was some severe problems with compliance. It contained a variance and there was no board.
Yeah.
There was no board, so they couldn't meet because they didn't have enough people to have their board, so there was no board. I mean, ultimately, it's city council's responsibility, but over the years, we've made these boards to do these things. So we have to, once we do that, we have to keep them filled unless we change it and say, okay, we're going to do away with that, which I think in the sake of public trust, it's better if we keep those boards.
Yeah, I know. We do need a variance board in place and if we put it off, it'll be after it's supposed to take effect before we have another city council meeting. We have two other meetings scheduled, but the agendas are already out for those.
See, Brenda lives in five, okay. I'm sorry. Will you finish?
Yes, sir.
Brenda lives in District five, correct?
It's three. I'm not...
Yes, she lives in District five. Mary lives in four. Roger lives in one. I don't know what district Norma lives in. So basically, in my opinion, I would have, I want people, different ones from different walks of life, from different districts. So I tried to get a three and I tried to get a two, but I don't know, like I said, I don't know where Norma lives. I don't know what district she lives in. So I'm fine with all of them that are on there. If you guys want a blessing, that'd be great. If you don't, that's your choice, but we definitely need that board.
I don't, I mean, I don't know how much of either. I just think at some point, you know, we might want to get other people that may be interested, may or may not be, you know, at some point.
Oh, I agree.
There's supposed to be five on here, you say?
Of two.
Of two.
Okay.
Or just put it out there that...
Well, I know, I know Amanda put it out on social media. I don't know if she put it out in the newspaper or not, but I remember seeing it on the city's Facebook.
I did see that one. I saw the Park Sport, but I don't know if she's saying it, you know.
Do you feel like you could use another person?
Well, see, Joelle Schuman is on the board. She may not be up for election and her term may not be open, so that may be why she's not on here.
And I think Joelle said that she didn't want to be on the board, but I don't know if she told the board that.
Well, you just did.
I don't know what she did. I really don't know what she did. I know that we did mail a letter to every single person that was up and ask, hey, are you interested in continuing? Do you not want to continue? Let us know because we're putting in the newspaper.
I did do it.
I didn't do that.
No, Justin, I can say I never got a letter.
You never got a letter?
No.
But you weren't up.
But you're on here.
You, is she, she, see, that's the problem I have. This is the problem that I deal with. We look like idiots when we come up here and say this and do this. If I'm thinking letters went out and letters didn't go out, then, I mean, that's just a big wash. And I know you weren't here. I mean, if I have to come and do that and send the letters, I'll do it. But when somebody says that they sent the letters out, I have to know that they sent the letters out instead of me thinking if they put it in the newspaper. I need to know that they put it in the newspaper.
And we're going to send letters out. We need documentation showing that the letters went out and, you know, it costs a little bit more money to send it that way. But you can get documentation that shows that the letter left here and whether they picked it up or not picked it up at the post office, you'll have that documentation. Now, what happened to it after they got it?
It is.
It doesn't matter. We'll know that they got it.
I agree.
Or an email. We could have responded to an email.
We had that discussion. Do you remember that day? I hope, I hope we have their email address of them. Because y'all were getting hand-delivered stuff, right?
Yes, we get a packet. We get usually an email notice, you know, when the postal lines are created or whoever's going to post the meeting would send us an email and let us know when the next meeting was and a little bit about it. And then usually we get a packet the Friday before. We, usually normally would have meetings on Monday and we'd get the packet Friday before. This gives us time to actually drive over and see where the issue is and what people are looking at trying to do and get a feel for the neighborhood.
Right.
And is this a good thing or not?
Yeah, no, there was no question on the work that you guys do. You look good. I was just, I had brought up emails and when I was meeting and some of the members said they didn't have email.
They didn't get email.
They said, we don't have email.
Who didn't have it?
At least, Norma.
Norma. Well, I guess I have to send her a letter.
Right, but we hand deliver these packets, so we need to make sure we're emailing them the packets. It's a lot easier. And I know you just got here. You're getting the end of it.
We will make sure to follow up on the process and reinforce the communication.
Okay.
So how many actual members are there now? Four or five?
I wish I could tell you.
That I know there's four because Stella passed away and then the big place would be filled by Roger Schultz. As far as I know, Joelle and Jill on the board and her term's not up, so even though she may not want to be.
You just told us.
I mean, the last time we met, she was there, so I don't know. She hasn't told me that she doesn't want to.
I'll entertain any motion you guys have.
So with these four and Joelle, that would give us the five, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that's good for two years. And all of these folks that are on here.
Were sitting there.
Were, yeah, we're, Minnie was already on there, right?
Yes.
And Brenda, you were already on there?
Yes.
And Norma was already on there?
Yes.
The only person new is Roger, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And as far as we know, Roger wanted to be on there because he came to you, came to us and let us know that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so all of the people that are on there have been on the board and want to be there and the one new one wants to be there, so I think we have a board of everybody that wants to be there.
Sound the right to me?
If something changes, we can come back and amend the board members.
Yeah, because you can change board members if you want to. If they have somebody that wants to resign or not be there, they can and then put somebody new, right?
I just wasn't sure if it'd been advertised and if we'd get any others, you know, that may want to join these boards.
Do you have the rules there printed out?
Not before we know.
Okay, I wanted them to have it tonight. Deborah and I looked for it, Denise, everybody in the office. We couldn't find it. But it's real clear, but it's funny. One of the, some of these boards, the mayor appoints them. The other, and the other ones, the city council does. It's just different times that they were created. So I'm almost certain that on this one, it's for the mayor to appoint them and get the blessing from the council. Or I wouldn't have talked to Roger. I would have stayed out of the whole operation. I wanted those things tonight so I can show them to them. I should have talked to you about it, but it's just a folder that was sitting there for years and now it's not there. So we'll find it.
Well, for the time being, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation for the board members starting March one, 2020, through March one, 2022. And if Norma in fact doesn't want to be on the board anymore, we can just amend the board members later on.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number eighteen, consideration of possible action in regard to the removal of fencing at Nixon Housing Authority.
I'll make a motion and we consider it to be item number eighteen.
Second?
And I'll second it.
Okay. We have fencing. The City of Kennedy owns fencing that is at the Smiley Housing Authority. You guys remember when Bruce Mills came in and said about offered up the fence, the old fence from the ballpark and all that? This is what, this is actually what went on. The city manager himself directed the staff to go install the brand new fencing panels and he used city employees to do it on city time. Well, now that he's gone, that stuff remains there. So before anybody else makes a mistake like that, how do you guys want us to go get that fence? I mean, I don't see how we send the employees. I mean, I don't see how we send the employees. I, I would, I mean, I would recommend contractor pick them up, something, but.
But it's city property, and if it was misappropriation of use of the property, so be it, but we need to get our property back.
I agree, I agree, we need to get it back. But since we have, how many, uh, interims have we been through, we're on the third one now, basically. So when he's gone, we're not saying, hey, he went over there and did that on his own, if that's what we want him to do, we need to give him that direction. Whatever it is, however you guys wanna recover that fencing.
What do we need to recover it?
Probably just a trailer.
A truck, a trailer, and some labor.
Truck, trailer, and two guys?
Yeah, and somewhere to pull posts.
Are they T-posts?
They said T-posts.
Don't, don't the city have a T-post board?
I'm gonna say they should have one.
Yeah, I would imagine they do.
I just don't want, I don't want, from now on, I want you guys to give the direction on stuff like that, because what, what happened before shouldn't happen.
So can we give direction in regards to returning the city property on city time back to the city from the housing authority?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So I'm open, I, I'll.
I would make a, I would make a proposal that we have a city truck, a city trailer, two employees, on city time, go over and remove the fence, remove the T-posts, and bring them back to the proper storage area, doing regular business hours.
Second. Is there any other discussion?
We just have to make sure this doesn't happen again.
I'm sorry?
Make sure this doesn't happen again.
Does not happen again.
Very good point, how, how are you guys gonna make sure that doesn't happen again? Because I warned you about it, and, and I told you these things were going on. What are we gonna do so it doesn't happen again?
That's not part, that's not part of my motion right now, let's finish the motion that's on the table, and then we'll move to the next situation.
Yeah, but that was part of the discussion, so what, what are we gonna do to make sure it doesn't happen?
Things like that.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent. I agree so much, I went to the district attorney with it. If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Miranda?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number nineteen, consideration of possible action in regard to willing water billing from Pecan Grove RV Park.
I'll make a motion we consider item number nineteen.
Presentation.
I have a packet for y'all that had to.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Hey, that's.
Very good.
How are y'all tonight?
Good.
I'm David Brodsky. And, uh, thanks for listening to my concern here, which is just, just, isn't just about the citizens of the city, but it's also about y'all's water department. Okay, apparently, there's incorrect billing going on with the water department and the sewer. It appears that not only myself, but multiple businesses and residents have been having the same issue. From my understanding, this issue's been brought to the attention of the city council in the past, and the city agreed to audit approximately nine apartment complexes and a few random residential meters, all of which were overbilled and had to be reimbursed. I'm not sure if that was correct or not. That being said, concerning my meters, there's an obvious malfunction noted in the area that says usage on the packet that I just gave you, which contains at least six months of my billing statements from the city. As you'll see on page one, you'll see zero usage. I've got three meters at the Pecan Grove RV Park, all of which supply approximately the same number of RVs, which is about fifteen RVs. This came to my attention when I received one bill with one of my meters using over a hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons of water and a five-thousand-dollar water bill, which was normally about five to seven-hundred dollars. I brought it to the attention of the city, and I was told that they would do a profile on my meters, and they concluded that everything was fine. Obviously, it's not. You can, uh, see by the, I had, I actually had the city come out and look, and they explained to me that I must've had a water leak that used a hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons of water. Now, every day when we do our maintenance, we go through, pick up the trash, clean the RVs, and check specifically for water leaks. A hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons of water would've obviously left an enormous puddle on the ground, and it would've been noticeable. Okay? The only leak that we could find was a small drip from a hot water heater pressure valve that was dripping very slowly. Okay? I don't think they used a hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons of water. On top of that, I was billed for a hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons of sewer, because apparently there's no sewer metering system to gauge how much sewer's actually being used in the city. So if there was a water leak, allegedly, that water obviously did not go down the sewer, so I should not have been charged for sewer usage in that amount. So it's not just the water, and it's not just the sewer, and it's not just me. I put my, uh, concern out on the City, uh, City of Kennedy Concerned Citizens, and there's been multiple people who've had the same issue. The second month, I received a bill, it was for over four thousand dollars on a different meter. Again, I was told that it was a water leak on my side. We searched vigorously for a water leak, found no water leak whatsoever. So we didn't repair any water leak, but mysteriously, the next month, my water bill on that same meter, after repairing no water leaks, was zero. So I concluded, and it's obvious, that the metering system throughout the city, and apparently the council's aware of it already, that it's not functioning properly, and people are being mis-billed. And it's not so bad for a person like myself that can afford to pay a five-thousand-dollar will, uh, water bill to keep my eighty-plus residents in water. But for those folks that are getting a eight-hundred-and-seventy-dollar social security check a month when they're getting a thousand-dollar bill, a water bill, that's a huge concern. And I'm wanting to know what the city's gonna do about correcting this problem, and also doing another profile, because I'm not even, I just went back six months. I haven't gone back the nine years that I've been in business there. I've got all my records, I just haven't had the time to go through them all, which I am having my CPA go through them at this time and find out exactly if this has happened to me in the past. Unfortunately, I don't pay my own bills, and if somebody does ask that, he does write the bill, and I don't see these things.
David, you, did you bring this to the attention of the city manager?
I did, to this city manager, I did, who's, who did, I guess is the new city manager, and he, uh, was actually, thought that it was kinda strange that the billing was zero, and I actually got a response back from the city secretary, I believe, which was Amanda Hines, that said that they discovered that my meters were broken, and that the reason why I got zero the next time was, zero usage the next time is because, oh, they were broken when they showed zero, but then they caught up when they started working. I don't think that's how that works. If they're broken, they're broken, they're broken, or if it's not working properly, and if it's happened in the past and it's been, and it's been addressed before in the city council, I believe that all the water meters in the City of Kennedy should be recalibrated or checked. Because, like I say, for these folks who can't afford these bills, and I would, you know, I'm not being so great right now, we all know all's down, my residents aren't as great as they could be. I can't be taking these hits like this either, that's nine thousand dollars in two months, which'd be normally, you know, nine-hundred dollars. So this has to be addressed, and there's folks around the community have been asking me to present this to the city and find out what the city intends to do about it.
Does the city give you a conclusion?
I have not given a conclusion at this point, except for that they're gonna replace my three meters, but that doesn't address the rest of the meters around the city.
Got you. Okay, but they did provide you some type of customer service?
I haven't seen anything yet.
Okay.
And I haven't been refunded on my money that I've lost.
Do you wanna visit over?
On the, David, one question, on the ones that have zero, was, was there, was nobody there then, or?
No.
You've had tenants the whole time.
I've had tenants the whole time.
So it should've been some numbers there.
There should've been some number there, but when it's on the city, when it's, um, for my benefit, which I could just keep my mouth shut and not say anything.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm with you, yeah.
But, and I'll take zero, you know, but it's not good for the city either.
No, it's not.
The city's, the city's losing money. And I'm losing money. So if this, this, these things aren't addressed and corrected.
So back in October to November, that's kinda the average, that nine-hundred and some dollars?
Yeah, about, usually, some, somewhere around the five-hundred-and-ten to six-hundred and some odd dollars is, is my normal usage per meter, and I've got three meters there, so you're looking at normally typically about fifteen to eighteen-hundred-dollar bill.
Okay.
So when I get something that's five-thousand dollars, it's kind of alarming. Apparently, it's, it's happened quite a few times to several people around the community, and, uh, not just me, so.
Thank you.
The folks that I'm concerned about are those that can't afford that, you know?
I understand, yeah. City manager, just, I, I know you have a little bit of input on it, we're gonna get that for me in just a minute. Several months back, this board asked the interim city manager to bring an auditor in, to addition, to do additional auditing. Have you guys seen him yet?
I have not heard your.
We, we don't know where that's at. It seems like we've asked for things and they didn't get done, so I'm hoping tonight that this council asks you to do that. Because when I, when I was getting out with the customer services, that's all we are to know, you know that, you've done this forever.
Yeah, we can actually.
If we don't want those answers.
Mainly, that's why we asked for an audit.
That the meters just quit, and then they came back on, and I can't be responsible for what people are saying, but you can, so. I just wanna make sure that, I, I know that you know, I just wanna make sure that our staff knows, we thought we had this taken care of several months back, and apparently it's not taken, it's not taken care of. So, um, hopefully, like I said, the board will ask you to bring an auditor in and audit some of these problems. Do you have any input on his specific situation?
Uh, no, so not on this specific situation, um, unless, uh, perhaps the director might have some information on it. But, uh.
There's no cowboy hat, I didn't notice him, okay, do you have any input on this?
Well, I did not have a long time to study upon this.
Correct.
Uh, probably found out about it about two-thirty this afternoon. What I concluded, and I'm not disputing anything, but as a former meter reader through the years and whatnot, what I concluded by looking at the profile, what apparently happened, our meters are electronically read.
Right.
But they're also mechanical and analog numbers on the meters. So they can be read either manually or through the electronics. What apparently happened, from what I saw on the profile, is that the meter computer did not pick up the reading for a couple of months, it looked like three months. So it got a zero usage. So when the, they went out the last month and it actually picked up the reading, it showed the reading of the actual usage, that's why the profile come back and showed the usage that it went through, it's just like if I install a meter and I wait four months to go read it, and it reads thirty thousand gallons, well, that, you still use that water, I just did not read it every month, so you would get billed a proper amount for that month and that billing sign. So if he showed zero usage, then he just got the minimum for a one-inch meter, which is whatever it is, I don't know the dollar amount. So when the actual laptop picked up the reading on the fourth month, it showed the total usage for the zero reads the month before. And that's why it got hit with the total amount at one time, instead of being prorated through the other three months, and it showed zero usage. But they did, uh, an adjustment to his account, I believe, of a certain dollar amount. If you don't know what it is, you can call tomorrow, City Hall, they can tell you what that is, and credited your account and made an adjustment. And we have ordered some meters to replace your meters, and they will be replaced when they come in, and it could be, you know, next week or things.
So when, when you put it in chronological order, what you're saying makes absolute sense. But as a council member and a representative of the city, how do we prevent that from happening? Because it does come off that way, like, how is my bill going to go for five thousand? And in this case, the months that I wasn't getting right, it was seven-twenty-nine, twenty-five. How do you prevent that in the future for when you're, when the employees going out to read the meters? They're pulling one-hundred percent of the meters every single month, because for a business owner, I'm sure it's frustrating, but like you were saying, when a resident on a very fixed income, like, that sticker price could hurt a citizen, so is there something, some precautions that can be made to prevent that from happening in the future?
Uh, yes, we can better train our meter readers, but we also need to find out from our billing system, and, uh.
So it could be a checks and balances, so.
The, the nation will be finding out, because from what I'm understanding, I can't pull the reports that I need to pull every month when the meter readings are complete before the bills go out. It's my opinion that certain reports need to be pulled, like zero usage report.
Yeah, that's what I was just.
A high usage report, and then they, they sell that list, and they go out and they manually reread those meters and come back and check that, and it was my understanding that our program software did not do that. That they manually had to go through all seventeen hundred individual customers and do that, and I go, well, that's not right. But again, I don't know the program that the city is using, uh, but I am somewhat familiar with INCODE. But I'd say, I, I've just been here since December thirtieth, and I'm, I'm playing catch-up here.
Great.
Uh, so I apologize, but, uh, I am familiar with AMR systems, a few of them, but this one doesn't seem to be able to do some of the reports. But I don't know completely yet, I, again, I apologize for not having maybe enough information and enough time to prepare for it.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Jim.
We should have the ability to pull. We should have the ability to pull the zero usage report. That should only happen. You know, if he had a zero use one month, somebody should have saw that and followed up on it. But he's got one, two...
Three.
There's one, two, three, four.
Two and a half. We got two up there.
Jerry.
So there's four zero usage.
Let's say I was driving the vehicle that has the tablet in it and I don't go close enough to anyone's meter. Would it do something like this or could it do something like this?
It should not pick up at all unless it receives a signal. Each meter has its own RL number. I think they call it something different here, but it's a frequency number. And when that meter is installed, that meter is put into that customer info and downloaded for that customer. So when they drive by or get within range of that meter.
Right.
Uh, it picks up that signal and allocates that number for that reading to that customer with that RL number.
Now, would that...
I'm sorry, just, so would it give you a zero if I don't get close enough?
It shouldn't give you...
Say I just don't go to his place.
Right.
What's it gonna do?
If you don't go there at all, it shouldn't be picking up at all and it should have over here on the side somewhere unread meters.
Okay.
Is it possible that...
Or an orphan read. I mean...
Is it possible that they're just driving by and not even paying attention? Is it picking it up? Is it not picking it up?
Well, that's the same thing.
Well, see, that's the thing. If you, if you get, it's like anything else, you know, there's always an exception to the rule. But that's why it's very important to check zero read and pull that report and you go out because these have analog digits also and you can manually read those and then input them in or change that reading so that these customers are billed properly. It's very important, you know, because they're like anything else. Our cars are electronic, but they do fail or something on the fails. And these meters are the same thing. That's why I don't like the full digital meter because when it goes out, it doesn't read anything and you can't read it. But with the analog, you can walk up and manually read that. And I believe if they would have caught these zero reads and went and manually read that and did a reread on them, they could have entered and we wouldn't be talking about this today. Because I do believe the water went through that meter. I've been reading meters for thirty-five years and ninety-nine point nine percent of every meter I've pulled out and had tested always tested slow. None ever tested fast. None.
Uh, I got a question on that because if my, if I'm getting a credit, you said I'm getting a credit, okay? And I think somebody did call me and said I was getting a credit in a amount of somewhere in the neighborhood of three thousand dollars.
And maybe, and this was my next question I was gonna ask, is the credit based off of the fact that, you know, at different levels, like if, I don't know what the breakdown is, but say the schedule is at ten thousand gallons, it's twenty cents a gallon. At fifteen thousand gallons, then it kinda penalizes and it goes up at like maybe twenty-five cents a gallon and keeps going up. If that is the case and those meters weren't read, then he does need a credit because the such high use of water and especially being a commercial business, he's being charged a lot more than if it was read every single month at the proper time.
Yeah, he did the top tier.
We do have a tier, tier system. When you reach, your first two thousand gallons go with your minimum water usage rate, okay? And then after that two thousand, it goes up to like four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine gallons at so many dollars per thousand. And there's several tier rates. So let's say he paid his minimum bill zero usage, okay? He should have got two thousand gallons with that. But let's say the meter did pick that reading up for the fourth month. Technically, he only should have got credit for the six thousand gallons that he should have got per month, per meter at the base rate, but then they had went back and done the tier rate so that he didn't get charged a hundred and seventy thousand on that all at one time tier rate. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
So what, I believe what they've done is they went back and discredited him everything instead of following the tier rates because it wouldn't have been that much.
Right.
Because according to the profile and going back, the meter did read that. But if there is still a concern according to our policy, we can pull that meter out, send it off, have it tested and have it come back and go through that. But I'm just, you know, like I say, I'm not, I don't have all the history on it. I just got just the last few hours. So again, this is just my opinion.
I'm still trying to figure out how I got a credit for zero usage I should be paying.
So when you, if you look at, if you look at it in chronological order, what's happening is when you're, when you have the zero usage, your base payment regardless for zero usage is seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. But it, the meter got skipped for so many months, so it wasn't reading it by the vehicle and by the computer system. So then when it finally reads it, it's saying you're using this astronomical amount of water, not necessarily a leak, but you went all these months without paying and then, and then it's, it puts you in such a high tier that makes your per thousand gallon K rate so much higher than normal. So like, it, 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 it's probably what needs the, what in my opinion needs to happen, your credit needs to be based off of what your actual amount of usage would have been normally per month. But because it, it's the city's fault for the city not reading it every single month. If we can get that zero usage report somehow figured out, then that, the city would be able to catch that every month. So when, when the city goes by your property and they, it just says, oh, zero usage, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents twenty-oh is this month, then they would say, no, we need to go out and check that meter to show that, oh, your normal usage is seventy-six thousand gallons of water, whatever it might be a month, which would put you in a much lower tier, which would make your, you would never end up with like a five thousand or four thousand dollar water bill. Does that kinda make sense?
It kinda makes sense. I'm also kinda worried about what's happened over the last seven or eight years, you know? I've got, actually have all my files for those years. And I'm having it audited by my CPA now to see if this has happened to me in the past. Like I said, I don't pay my bills, so I didn't know. Okay, so, uh, I do come in a lot of times and pay the water bill here lately, since this has happened. And I, but to tell, to tell me from the water department that it's a leak, when that's not correct, it's not a leak. It's a malfunction.
Malfunctioning reader.
And the reading, not a leak. And there's been multiple other people in the town that have said they've had the same problem. But they've gone and they've actually hired plumbers to go out and look at their properties and make sure that there was no leak on the property. And these folks are harmed big time because if they get an eight hundred and seventy dollar a month social security check and they get a thousand dollar water bill, what are they gonna eat on? You know? That's not fair for them to have to go through this and then be set up on a payment plan to pay that thousand dollars bill back to the city that they're not even supposed to be paying. Where's the money going? That's the question. And if the meter's broke, it's broke, it's broke, in my opinion. It's not working. How can you accurately determine what is being used and what's not being used? And on top of that, how are you gauging the city sewer? You're gauging it off of the water usage and not gauging it off of the sewer. So not only am I being charged on the water, I'm being charged with the same amount of volume going through the city sewer.
Mr. Jerry, how many employees do you have with the water department?
Roughly nineteen.
Nineteen?
Eighteen.
Okay. And we're all, we're all aware that stuff malfunctions, software goes down. Would it hurt to put people on foot to start comparing what the reading here at City Hall versus what's there at the property? Literally going over there, look at the meter, conversating back, giving them a phone call, or getting all the reports coming back. This is what I got. What did you get here for this? That way we don't run into these kinda situations anymore. I know y'all are busy, but going on trusting a computer, it's...
But realistically, that zero report would do exactly the same. That zero report would give you a list of meters that needed to go be checked manually by someone to verify...
Why just go off of zero reports when you can do the whole city?
Because it's seventeen hundred meters that you gotta read. You gotta pay somebody to do it. And while we would like to believe that we have the facility, have the ability to do that, we really don't. And we sit here and say that, but that's not real. We don't have the hours nor the money to pay for that type of situation. But we do have the ability, we have a computer system in place that should be able to give us a zero report. That zero report will give any zero reading, so anybody that had a zero reading, that should show up on. And if you have a reading, you should be able to run a report that gives you a reading that's, says somebody got a five thousand dollar water bill. You should be able to pull a reading on that also. It's all done by computer.
Just someone wasn't following the procedure. That's all it was.
That's it. And we can put them out on their feet all day, every day, and all they have to do is miss one number and the whole entire reading is off if you go out and manually read a meter. And if you're reading three thousand of them, it's very, very simple to do that. I think you have the most efficient system right now. Jerry, I believe you're gonna try to get those reports right to where we have access to them, whether we produce each and every month.
I will be talking with Amanda when she comes back and, uh, and find out. I believe, see the information is in this computer.
Right.
I just don't believe either we don't know how to retrieve it or it's not in there, but the information is in there.
That's right.
And what good is it if you can't pull, there's two main reports that I pull every month when I was, you know, but, uh, and that was a high usage report, which is basically anything over fifty thousand gallons.
There you go.
And I would go through them one by one. We'd go out and do rereads and then a zero usage. And we would go out and turn on the water, make sure the meter was, would, would spin and these things that we do. But it's my understanding that the program that we have now, those reports cannot be pulled. So to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense, but then again, I'm not over that, so I don't know.
And I wanna clarify to everyone on the audit, that was 2017, those problems ended. That was part of the reason for auditing. What we did, or this, what the board did was, they did what they thought was the right thing to do and we, it's time for us to check ourselves on the audit. We didn't have any problems after November of 2017, according to our audit. Those problems were prior to.
This is 2019, all these papers I'm looking at right here.
Right. So, so we need to go back and check ourselves and make sure that we're not doing it. And that's what, that's what you guys agreed to a couple of months ago. I just think that our interim didn't get that done for us.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Can I mention one, one thing?
Yes.
I live out in the country. I love some supplies, my water. I had a water leak. Didn't know it. Three or four weeks, my bill was over a thousand dollars. Second time it happened, other time was it went up to the house, five, six hundred dollars. They've got a system. They were able to tell me the days that that water leaked. And I don't know what system y'all were using, but they were able to tell me exactly what days that water leaked. And they catch that.
And our system can do that. They can, there's, it profiles it almost, what is it, every hour that you get?
Every minute.
Is it every minute?
Every hour.
Every hour? That's what I thought. And, and so they can watch it where...
Well, that guy, when he goes by and reads it.
So this is, this is a...
And spikes, they let me know. So I just was mentioning, I didn't know what kind of system I had.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna attempt to motion here.
So, uh, is there's this...
Can I say what we're thinking through that?
Because if there is actually a water leak for some folks, then they're, they're not actually using the sewer. So how are you gonna address the sewer, gauging the sewer consumption issue?
So the city does address that. So if they can read in the profile, so the way Amanda explained it to me and how it's been explaining to others, is you can read this profile every hour. If your water is consistent and it's slowly increasing in the gallons of usage and it never dies off, like that's a clear indication showing in the profile that it's a leak. So then from that time period from when the leak started until it was caught, then you can go back in and say it was two thousand gallons of use. It's obvious through the profile that was done, two thousand gallons of water was leaking into the ground, not leaking into the sewer system. And then the city can go back then and give you that two thousand gallon sewer credit back to your account.
Unless it's your toilet that's...
But I haven't gotten a sewer credit back and I'm not sure that... So in my motion...
All right.
Ready, Jerry?
So in my motion, what I'm gonna motion for is a twenty-four month profile of your business. If you want to furnish the water bills, the city should be able to pull the info.
Correct.
The city should be able to pull the bills from the past twenty-four months for this account.
I thought I was really gonna go back a year, but I'll check.
But you, you should have, y'all on the key records. So then if we can pull twenty-four months of his records, we know that his base pay is seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. So if we see that it's going three or four months of seven hundred, of zero usage, then we know that it's not being, in my theory, it's not being read properly. And so with that motion, we'll do a profile. The city will look at what is going on for the past twenty-four months. That's exactly what we did with the apartment complexes, as well as directing the city manager, city secretary and public works department to find a way to pull a zero usage.
Record.
Record each month. Because that, in my, in my personal opinion, would have caught this a lot sooner.
Yes, I agree.
And I, and that would get us started with your instance and then help prevent this from other citizens and other businesses. So that's my motion. Twenty-four month profile, figuring out, or let me clarify, a twenty-four month water bill cycle, one-year profile for Congrove and then a motion, or staff direction for the city secretary, city manager, public works department to find out a way of pulling a zero usage report.
And I'll second that.
Justin, do you wanna capture a high report or so?
Yeah, we do need that.
In that, since you're getting a low?
I thought you said they did one? Or was that somewhere else?
They haven't done it here.
Let's do a high usage report as well. I don't wanna say fifty thousand dollars because that might be extremely high for the city of Kennedy.
Right. He'll have to determine.
He'll have to determine what's high for our businesses.
And I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion?
Does that sound pretty reasonable for you?
It sounds reasonable to me. You know, I mean, I'm gonna probably go back at least six or seven years and see what my bills produce and then I'll submit them to the city once I come up with those numbers. I'm not sure that, I may have done this a lot. I could be down fifty, sixty grand. I don't know, you know? I just need to have my CPA look into that to see where I'm at on that. And then instead of getting a credit, I'd prefer to get a check. And then I, I, you got my money, so I'd like to have it back and then I can pay when it's due. If that'd be all right.
I don't know how that works.
Yeah, we would have to definitely talk about it.
We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to talk about that. That was part of that water bill forgiveness that we started, but we didn't, we didn't do it. Is there any other discussion? You wanna make that motion?
Well, I mean, I think we don't really have to deal with it. We just continue.
We won't capture that. Most of all, we will make sure we give instruction that we, that he follows up on that and gives us an answer. Because I know we did instruct and audit to be done. I just don't know what happened to it. So you guys have to go back and look and see when it was and what the instruction was and get that done. Because that's already on, that's already in the minutes and on the report. We will follow up.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please follow up.
Brandon?
Yes.
Lassler?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Brendan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, David.
Have a good night.
Thanks, David.
Item number twenty, consider and take appropriate action in regard to resolution twenty-nine to call and order the general election for the mayor and council members for districts two and four for May second, 2020, providing early voting locations and times and establish a time, place and manner of holding said election. Any will...
I'll make a motion and we can...
We consider item number 20.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Formality?
Why is April... Why is Monday only till 4 o'clock?
Is that a taco or is City Hall closing early?
It's the...
On April 20th? Is that a holiday?
That's a holiday.
That's the day after Easter?
I believe it's the same.
Oh, no, it's probably April.
April 20th?
April 20th.
It's a holiday.
Nope.
It is Easter... Day after Easter.
Day after Easter, yeah.
Which all are open, right?
They're open at the end.
Should that be changed to 5?
Change to 5.
These usually follow the Secretary of State's election calendar.
It's awful.
Yes, it probably should be 5 o'clock.
Yeah, I'll just fix that to say 5.
Are we gonna do this in the auditorium?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, just because this place has video and audio surveillance?
Auditorium?
This does.
And they're not even here.
Right, so we shouldn't use this room because of that?
Yeah.
Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 20-09 and amend the resolution to say Monday, April 20th, 8:00 a.m. to 5 p.m.
Second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please follow up.
Brandon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, guys. Item number 22, closed session. City council will meet in closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act.
21, 21, 21.
Good eye. Item number 21, consideration of possible action in regard to Resolution 20-10, entering into an election agreement with Karnes County to run the general election for early voting and election day voting. Any movement?
I make a motion to consider. I am 21 on the agenda.
Second.
Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Um, I have to apologize to the council. Staff does not have this ready for action for the council. We have not gotten the contract from the county yet. So we can add to pull off the agenda not yet ready for action.
Okay, do we have... Do we still have time to do this? Or we're not close to the deadline?
Not for the contract with the county.
Okay. When will we have it? Or when do you think it'll arrive?
I'll make contact with you tomorrow.
Okay. Who was supposed to do this?
Myself and the city secretary.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's table it, guys, or take no action?